... on one of the exciting subjects, removal of excrement. A reminder to people, as the weather gets a little better, it shall be unlawful for any person to cause or permit a dog to be on any property, public or private, not owned or possessed by such person unless such person has the immediate possession of a device for the removal of excrement and a depository for transmission of excrement to a receptacle located on property owned or possessed by such person. You can tell an attorney about this. It shall be unlawful for any person in control of or causing or permitting any dog to be on any property, public or private, not owned or possessed by such person, and failure to move excrement left by such dog to a proper receptacle located on property owned or possessed by such person. Reminder that the fine for that is $25 to $500 for a repeat offender. And just a reminder to be a good citizen and be respectful of your neighbors. Alderman Kedala?
On the subject of excrement, what, I've seen it happen before. Does staff, perhaps, at Chivinowitz have any recommendation on what a resident could lawfully, legally, and light-handedly do to assist in the stopping of the unlawful excrement deposits?[87.22][87.22](laughter) I've seen, I've seen it happen. I've even had conversations with neighbors, and it doesn't seem to make a difference when you're nice about it, so.
Chief?
Once again, we would encourage everybody that sees an excrement incident to bring it to the attention of the police department. Obviously, it might put people that observe something like that in conflict with maybe some of the people around them, but once again, a call to the police department. Obviously, you can remain anonymous. If you do not wish to remain anonymous, and you'd like to talk to a police officer, the police officer could come to you, talk to you. You can tell them what you've seen. They can go forward from there, but keep in mind, barring any evidence that we might need, we need to establish the fact that there was a violation of the ordinance and hearsay is not permissible. So, once again, I think a casual warning might not be a bad thing, and then if it's a repeat situation, we can obviously elevate it to the level that it needs to go to to change negative behavior. So, once again, a call to the police department would be quite helpful in making sure that we accomplish this goal.
Thank you, Chief. Also, under Mayor's report, DuPage Mayors and Managers is looking for volunteers, Alderman, to serve on the various committees of DuPage Mayors and Managers. All of these are open to you, such as Regulatory Issues Committee, Transportation Policy, Transportation Technical, the Transit Plan Implementation, Budget and Operations Committee, Intergovernmental Relations Committee, Legislative Committee, and Planning Committee. Anybody who would like to volunteer on any of those committees can contact Mr. Murmice or myself. And lastly, I wanted to remind everybody of Troop 65, Sunday, this Sunday, at Holy Ghost Pancake Day. Somebody help me with the hours. Does anybody know? Nine to one? Eight to one? Eight to one at Holy Ghost. Again, a good for Troop 65. And that concludes my report. Mr. Manager?
Just one report. I'd like to let everybody know, all the participants of Student Government Night, that I too do like Buffalo Wild Wings.[228.48][228.48](laughter) Good food.
Mr. Murmice, were we finalizing the schedule for the interview of the next city manager? He or she?
I'm glad you mentioned that. You have before you the, I think it's the old schedule that lists May 30th, May 31st, and June 1st as the dates that you'd need to be available for the city manager interviews. That date has been swapped with the following weekend. If that's acceptable with all of you, that's the date we'd have the highest attendance. Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be able to get everybody, but the highest attendance would be for the following weekend. I believe that's Friday, June 6th, Saturday, June 7th, and Sunday, June 8th. So, that will be the revised schedule, and I'll send out that information on all of your packets tomorrow with description of each of the day's events.
Any questions? Comments? Alderman Lewitin?
I know we had private citizens who are participating in this. Will they be invited also now?
They will be invited to the June 6 reception, where the candidates will give a brief five-minute presentation, and they'll be allowed to interact with them and give us their input as to who they think should or should not be the next city manager. If nothing further, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? Alderman Shaki?
Items one, two, and four.
Those items bill will be removed, which then let me go directly to item three. May I have a motion to approve contract award to Arrow Construction Company for special service area 13 roadway project in amount not to exceed $2,731,037.34. Is there such a motion? Is there a second? On the question, all in favor, no roll call, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
That is approved. Items one, two, and four will be taken up under Other Business. That brings us to committee chairman reports, planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Shaki?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary. Alderman Coles? Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary.
Our new Alderman, our order is going to read this. Okay? Yes.
Okay. An ordinance approving the execution of the intergovernmental agreement between the Wooddale Police Department and the Wooddale Park District for Police Services. Agreement approved in 2005.
All right. This, this agreement has been approved in 19, 2005, and the reason that we got a new ordinance on it is because in April 25, 2008, this ordinance was increased fees of approximately 5% in each category, and it was approved by the Park District, the Police Department, and our city attorney, Pat Bond. All it is is the same agreement, just updated with the amount of 5% increase. Do I hear a motion?
Is that your motion, Alderman Coles?
Yes, that's my.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
That's approved as ordinance O-08-22. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Public Works, Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda, Kate is going to present that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask to excuse myself on this other agenda.
Recuse yourself.
Yes.
Very good. Noted for the record. Alderman?
This is a report and recommendation to approve the release of the low bidder for the 2008, 2009, and 2010 lawn fertilization and weed control contract award.
I make that motion as stated.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
On the question? Alderman Shaki?
I'd like to, I'd like to address Gary. Mr. Holmes, please. I'd like to first compliment you on the new staff hires. We have a golf course superintendent from the city of Aurora, and if I understand it correctly, he's required to carry an applicator's license for fertilizer so he can buy. And we also have a new hire from the County Forest Preserve, where he was a maintenance worker, and they're required to have a pesticide operator's application license from the Department of Agriculture. So, I'm just wondering if this motion is necessary at all, if we have the people on staff now to be able to buy and to take care of fertilizing?
Mr. Holmes, although that may be a Mr. Bond question.
The, the motion that's pending is to release the low bidder for that. There were bids that went out for this work, and the, currently, the action sought to be taken by the council is to release that individual or company that submitted the low bid for those applications. The second item on the agenda is to, at least on the report and recommendation, is to approve the contract for that, that program, but the current motion on the floor deals with the release of the low bidder.
I'm sorry. I will off until the second item.
Anything further on the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
I'm just going to abstain on this.
We note that Alderman Wesley and Alderman Lewitin have recused himself and abstained. That passes.
The next item on the agenda is going to be made in the affirmative, because that's the appropriate way to make motions, and that's how we did vote on it at committee. However, this motion did fail at the committee level, but it's in the affirmative, and I anticipate that a majority of council will probably vote in the negative on it. And then, we did come up with an alternate plan on this at the committee level, which I believe does not require a motion. So, Kate is going to read item number two on the agenda.
This report and recommendation to approve contract award for the 2008, 2009, and 2010 lawn fertilization and weed control program to True Green Chem Lawn in amount of $60,900.
I make that motion as stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
On the question? Alderman Shaki?
Do I, do you want me to restate the whole?
Not necessary.
I'd like, I'd just like to, again, compliment and say, do we really need any kind of contract awards, and if we have the people on staff that can handle fertilizing and so forth?
Mr. Holmes?
While we might have people with qualifications, it all boils down to man-hours and workload, and I've been on broken record on that subject for the past several months. The gentleman who was hired from the Forest Preserve District is in our utility section, and basically is focused on infrastructure maintenance, water maintenance, sanitary, and storm sewers. He's not working on the street side of things, which is responsible for lawn maintenance. And our new assistant director has been hired to basically, you know, oversee all of the operations with regards to streets and utilities, as well as general oversight and maintenance and wastewater. So, he, again, not hired as a worker, but as an administrator or an overseer. Is it something we can look at if we do go with the alternative approach that was discussed at committee, and where we take one more year, and then we go back and revisit this issue? Certainly, we can relook at it the next year, but those staff were hired for specific purposes, and, and again, it's a matter of workload and man-hours to perform projects like this.
Alderman Kedala?
Two questions for Mr. Holmes. Sorry, Mr. Holmes. First, actually, both of them are in regards to Mrs. Madonna's presentation. For clarification, this contract would be for all city-owned grass or lawn areas, not just the dry bottom ponds, correct?
Correct. The reference, the area referenced in the motion before you was for all city grasses.
And second question, if this motion fails, those test ponds will continue to be test mules, and they will, they will continue with the organic fertilization?
In the past, we had just had, again, limited sites, so it would, I guess, we'd have to come to council, or council will have to give direction to staff if you want us to expand to every single detention basin in town.
My question was specifically about the ones that have already been test mules, basically.
And I think we just, there was then, staff was kind of giving direction last week. We were going to use the Travel Air Basin off of Oak Meadows Drive and the Addison Road Basin.
Right, thank you. Just making sure. I wanted to basically recap that part of last week's discussion. Thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Coles?
He answered my question. He was going to, he said the same question I did.
Alderman Shaki?
Yeah, I think there's a stormwater meeting next Tuesday, and I think the intent, or Wednesday, and I think the intent of the Stormwater Committee was to not fertilize any of the detention ponds. So, I'm thinking that perhaps we should wait to see what their recommendation is, and I make a motion to table this until after that meeting, to the next committee meeting, to see what their recommendation is.
Motion to table takes precedence if there is a second, and it will be not debatable.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Post.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
The motion's to table.
This is on the motion to table.
No.
Alderman Kedala?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Wesley?
Stand.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Mayor votes no. That brings back to the floor the original motion. Anything further discussion on that? Motion is in the affirmative to approve the contract award, however, the recommendation out of committee, I believe, is to deny. Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Kedala?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
No, to deny.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Wesley?
Stand.
Alderman Lewitin?
Stand.
All right, that motion fails.
And it's, and then I believe without objection, we're going to remove item number four from the Public Works Committee report.
Without objection, I'm removing item four, as that falls within the scope and the authority of the city manager.
Actually, I stand corrected. Item number three is, is next, I was jumping ahead, and this is an item.
Alderman, before you go on, maybe I misunderstood what you said. Is the, prior, is there an alternate you're making to the approval of the contract award as it stands?
It was my understanding.
Was there a compromise that was?
Well, it was my understanding that we did not need to go through council to do one year of the standard operating procedure that we've done in previous years of doing the weed control for one year while we planned for the future, instead of signing a three-year contract that we were just going to do weed control for one year, as usual, with, with True Green Chem Lawn. And then, I believe that Alderman Shaki brought up the point that Stormwater was going to meet again to talk about the detention basins, and then we can take that as a cost. Would that be acceptable?
Staff in agreement? Do you have your direction that you need? Very good. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. Item number three on the Public Works Committee is in reference to our discussion last week for A&amp;R Cement. This is a sidewalk program, and this is where the recommendation that came out of committee was to pay for work performed from the vendor A&amp;R Cement. However, there was a retainage amount that we agreed as a committee, we weren't going to pay that vendor for, because we have some issues with the work performed, and we want to make sure that we don't lose our leverage when we're working out the issues with that vendor. So, Kate is going to read item number three on the Public Works Committee.
This report and recommendation to approve payment number two to A&amp;R Cement Inc. for the 2007 sidewalk program in the amount of $42,180.
And 17 cents.
And 17 cents.
I make that motion as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I believe I made the issue on this. My question is, is the punch list completed on Cedar? And my question is, Mr. Bond, if it is not completed, is there a way that we could not do as much of deduction as we dare request it? First of all, guys, every time we reduce a bond or reduce retainer, it just seems like it comes back and haunts us. It really does. It happened at Woods Lift Station. I mean, that's still ongoing. So, I'm asking the attorney on that advice, could we hold back or no?
Mr. Bond?
Short answer is no, but as the attorney, I have to give you the full answer. The, it's my understanding that the work that's been performed is $42,180.17. What's not happening, and there was some discussion about reducing the 10% retainage, that is not being done. The 10% retainage is designed to protect the city in the event that there are some issues that come up with respect to that, the construction of that, of that work. But you're obligated, if the work has been performed, you're obligated to pay for the work that's been performed, and it's my understanding that $42,180.17 worth of work has in fact been performed and has been approved.
May I do one follow-up?
Alderman Wesley?
What will be the retainer left on that, then? Will we have enough retainer if this person does not finish their contract, or it's ongoing, that it doesn't get corrected? Are we going to have enough retainer to do the repairs that is requiring at location?
Mr. Holmes?
By not reducing the retainage for this pay estimate, the retainage will be $17,000, roughly. Now, since this, since even last week, we've gone out and done additional work, so the value of money owed to the contractor is even considerably more than $17,000. And I understand that while there may be a few cracked squares, and I know they're still working on those, certainly not $17,000 worth of sidewalk. The whole, the whole two blocks was hardly over that.
Alderman Police?
Question from Mr. Bond. So, 10%, we don't have to drop that. Is that like a standard policy for the city? Do we have an ordinance for that or something? I'm not sure.
That's part of the contract. There's a 10% retainage, and that is common in the industry that you would retain in a public project. You would retain 10% for that very purpose, and as Mr. Holmes indicated, the, you always want to be ahead, financially ahead of the game, and given the amount of retention that's, that's still available, and the amount of potential work that's, needs to be done, or corrections or modifications, it appears as though you're in that position, which is the whole reason that you have the retention in the first place.
So, we don't have to decrease this retainage to 5%? We can stay at 10?
You are not obligated to decrease the retention amount, no.
Okay. I got one question for Mr. Holmes. Mr. Holmes? As far as the punch list, would you say it's 75% complete or 25% complete?
Project-wide, I would say the punch is probably 90% complete. They've been, again, working very hard over the last week. They are clearly trying to finish the project and get it completed in the next project. So, they've done a lot of work within the last week.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
That passes?
We're keeping it 10%.
Does that include your report?
Yes, it does.
Finance Administration, Alderman Wesley?
No report.
Well done.[1411.15][1411.15](laughter) Now, Eugene, you should learn from that.
Yes.[1417.01][1417.01](laughter)
Community and Economic Development, Alderman Lewitin?
No report. Mayor.
That brings us to Other Business, which is items one, two, and four, leftover from the consent agenda. Item one being approval of revised 2008 street improvement program to delete Commercial Street between Grove and Wooddale Road and replace it with Sunnyside Avenue between Wooddale Road and Elmore. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Alderman Shaki?
Yeah, we're changing, again, what streets should be done, and I'm not, in my mind, not sure we should be doing this. I understand that we're not, we're removing one item from the street replacement program, but to add another one, I don't know what it's going to cost. I don't think we have those figures yet.
Mr. Holmes?
Staff was directed by council to remove Commercial Street from the 2008 program. Staff was also directed by council that the 2008 program be approximately $1.3 million. So, we, using the ratings, we, we went to Sunnyside Street, which was needed, required based on the ratings, and then also fit the dollars that we had available. So, this will allow us to continue that 1.3 goal, as well as stay on our general philosophy of doing by the ratings.
Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
That passes. That brings us to item two. May I have a motion to approve the direction to staff to negotiate a scope of services and costs for industrial pretreatment program with Baxter and Woodman? Is there such a motion?
Second.
On the question? Alderman Shaki?
One more time, if you can update me again on exactly what we're going to be asking Baxter and Woodman to do.
Mr. Holmes?
This will be administration of the city's industrial pretreatment program, which is basically our watchdog program over industries in town to make sure that they do not discharge illegal substances into our sewer system or into our treatment plants. And again, there are a number of federal guidelines and federal standards, and they're going to basically oversee those guidelines.
Thank you.
Anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Brings to item four. May I have a motion to approve 2007 sidewalk program contract change order number one in the amount of $22,132. Is there such a motion?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
On the question? Alderman Shaki?
Now, this doesn't include Mill Road, correct?
Mr. Holmes?
You are correct. This was just the sidewalk program for 2007, which was Cedar and Addison Road are the two big ones.
Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
That is approved. We still do not need an executive session tonight? Mr. Bond, do you want to explain what an executive session is?
An executive session is a mechanism that the Illinois Legislature has devised that allows the city council, which otherwise is required to meet in open or public session, to discuss on a limited basis certain items. Because of the sensitive nature of those items, it allows them to recess or to meet in a closed executive session in order for the city council to have a discussion. Generally, those items include personnel matters, which may be sensitive. You don't want to have a discussion about an employee's performance and have that broadcast over the airwaves to all of the residents. Similarly, if the, if the city is contemplating the purchase of land, for example, you wouldn't want the council to have a debate and discussion over whether they're going to purchase that land, and if so, how much they're going to pay, because if the property owner found out that the city is willing to pay a million dollars for their property, and they were willing to offer it to the city for $950,000, the price of that negotiation for that house just, or that property just went up another $50,000. So, there are certain limited circumstances, and it allows the council to go behind closed doors for purposes of discussing those things in order to have what is called a more full and frank discussion over the issues and have a sometimes spirited debate over those types of issues, and ultimately come to some resolution. The council is not allowed to conduct any final action in executive session. All final action has to be conducted out here in public in order for the members of the public and any audience members to see and hear the discussion and debate on any of those items. But we are fortunate in this evening, we do not have any executive session matters, and no offense to those who are participating tonight in Student Government Night, but I suspect that you wouldn't be invited to join us in the executive session, because executive session is limited and restricted as to who can be in executive session. The elected Alderman and city clerk are by statute, by state statute, allowed to participate. Anyone else is there by their invitation. So, it's a, it's again a mechanism to allow for a government to discuss those sensitive items outside public view.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Under items to refer, Mr. Holmes, I think you have your direction to refer to Stormwater Committee pursuant to Chairman Madonna's comments on whether we should abandon weed control and pesticide control in the dry bottom ponds.